All right, very good. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to invite you all to this evening's Planning Commission meeting here at City Hall, 501 Laurel Street, Wednesday, March 17th, at 2023, at 6 o'clock. Would you please call the roll?
Marone. Gorham.
Here.
Stangline.
Here.
Duval.
Here.
Jaeger.
Yes. And that'll be all for this. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great need and justice of God.
Thank you, everyone. Item number four is an approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve or any changes or additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. We've got our agenda here. Item number five is the approval of the minutes. This is from our regular meeting that was held on the 19th. Do we have a motion to approve or any?
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. We've got approval of the minutes. Item number six is the appointment of a new vice chair. Mr. Kramvik, how exactly would you like this to play out? Shall we take some... We do have some potential new members that may be joining us, I understand, in the coming...
There has been a couple applicants.
Couple applicants, but we don't know about their status, so we're going to be kind of held to what we've got here this evening. Is that right?
That's correct.
Oh, very good. So I'm going to just open it up for anyone who would like to nominate. I believe you can also self-nominate for Vice Chair. I can't look at myself. I'm already doing something.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Gorham as Vice Chair. Make sure I beat him to the...
I love that nomination. Are there any other nominations? I see none. Mr. Gorham, would you be willing to humbly accept the title or the role and all of the accolades that go along with?
Probably I'll accept that role.
Very good. That's excellent. So I'm going to just go ahead and open this up to a vote here. All those in favor of our dear incumbent here of joining us as our Vice President or Vice Chair for forever, basically. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. Welcome aboard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Don.
You'll get a packet. Yes. The packet and a tee-shirt. Packet and a tee-shirt next week. You get that. Okay, very good. Item number seven, this is new business. We're going to jump right into item 7A. This is the consideration of a variance request for 3 Washington Street Northeast. Mr. Kramvik, would you please give us the rundown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dairyland Operations has submitted two variance requests for 3 Washington Street Northeast, which is in the Commercial Corridor zoning district in which drive-through businesses are a permitted use. The first variance request is to allow their main entrance to face the rear of the property. Based on Section 515-2-14, there is a requirement for the principal facade to face onto an avenue. The second variance request is to allow a 27-foot, 1-inch principal building front yard setback, a 24-foot side yard setback, corner setback, and a 66-foot, 7-inch rear yard setback. The Commercial Corridor District standards requires that the principal facade build-to range is 0 to 10 feet. So I did include all of those because there's potentially that the facade could change to the rear, so I just wanted there to be a clear understanding of where those setbacks are. So variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. The purpose of the 0 to 10-foot build-to range in the Commercial Corridor District is to place buildings closer to Washington Street. Those were... That was discussed as part of the zoning code update, as well as to facilitate rear parking. The proposed design does achieve a closer build-to range than the existing building, and also on the design, there is proposed parking in the rear rather than the front. When the variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan, Land Use Goal 2 Policy 3 states promote reinvestment in the city's main highway corridors and downtown. Also Economic Development Goal 3 Policy 2 states attract new businesses best suited for the community's assets, increasing local employment options, and building the city's tax base. Variants should be granted also when the applicant for the variance established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance. So based on the size of the property, .28 acres, which is smaller for, I guess, a drive-through, fast-food establishment compared to some of the other ones on Washington, such as Jimmy John's, Starbucks, Taco John's. It does have a challenge complying with the zoning ordinance. Drive-through facilities require circulation around the property and an appropriately sized stacking lane to accommodate vehicles. Also, the proposed building is a drive-through and pickup-only establishment, which makes multiple entrances to the building impossible. The proposed rear of the building provides enough space for staff only, so having that rear entrance, there really isn't allowable circulation flow from front to back of the building. Alternative designs have been proposed to staff, and earlier design placed the building closer to Washington Street, but required pedestrians to walk through the drive-through lane, and the city engineer also had concerns from that design with the proposed location for the exit to Gillis Avenue. It was very close to Gillis. So the design that's proposed from Dunkin' Donuts helps alleviate these two characteristics. Also, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. A good example of a nearby restaurant establishment is Jimmy John's, which has a significant glass facade facing Washington Street, but it's not the main entrance. The entrance is actually on the side, but it does give a nice appearance still to Washington Avenue. So with this, there still is a recommendation from staff and within the design criteria. I wanted to call it out as something that would be required is a 65% glazing along Washington Avenue, so it would still kind of fit in with that character of Washington Avenue. So with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of both variance requests at 3 Washington Street Northeast with the following conditions. Any conditions added to variances do have to be strictly related to what the variance requests are. So anything else in there, such as lighting, you know, does have to be related to the variance request. Otherwise, it would just conform to our existing lighting ordinance. So the recommendations to add to it would be landscape. Parking lot standards must be applied to the parking lot and drive-through lanes along Washington Street and Gillis Avenue, and must be approved by staff prior to issuance of the building permit. The reason for this one is because the building is a little bit further away than what Planning Commission and the City Council were looking for along Washington Street. I think the landscape would help kind of tie it together and make it feel like it's closer and enhance that facade to Washington Street, which is what the ordinance was attempting to do originally with that 0 to 10-foot build-to range. Also, a 65% glazing requirement along Washington Street must be depicted on the construction drawings prior to issuance of the building permit. And then there's a walk-in cooler along the side that either must be screened or consistent with the architecture of the building. And with that, the applicants may be online. Otherwise, I can certainly answer any other questions from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Does the Commission have any questions for Mr. Kramvik or city staff? Please, Mr. Duval.
James, can we confirm that the applicant is available or accessible at this time to take questions?
Is there anybody online, Brent?
Hi, Mike Mead. I'm with the Ownership Group. I'm a project manager and franchisee rep. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe Mario Valentini is also on the line with us, the architect, so we're excited to be there.
Yep, I'm here too.
Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Did you say your name was Mike Mead?
Yes, that's right. M-E-A-D.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Then I'll reserve my questions for when we bring the applicant forward during public hearing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So any other questions specifically for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
If I... As I recall, last night, the new lighting ordinance, is it in effect? Did it went through last night?
Nope. So last night, it was just the first reading at this time.
Is this project being held to the old standards or held to the new standards, or are they not applicable?
It would be, I guess, whenever they apply for the permit, when the application would be submitted.
When will the new lighting standards... Do we have an estimate when?
So June 5th will be the second reading. It'll... It's usually published in the Sunday or Saturday paper, so you're looking at two weeks after June 5th.
Okay, that helps. How about parking standards? And is this like...
Commercial corridor does not have any parking standards.
Okay.
They're exempt.
How many spots, just out of curiosity, are they proposing?
As this is a drive-through only one, I believe it's three in there. One... They do have the requirement to still have an ADA spot there. So I believe three spots is what's on the proposal.
Three spots. Those are my first questions. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for staff? All right, having none of those, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of this. So first, we'd like to give the opportunity for the applicant to speak if they would like. So either one of the two joiners here, if you feel like you would like to speak, you don't have to, but if you do feel like you would like to just give us a basic rundown, or if you have anything you'd say, now is the time. So and we'll get you online here, and I think we can all hear you. Just to make sure, just you guys can hear us and we can hear you.
Yep, I can hear you. This is Mario Valentini.
Very good. Thank you, Mario.
I don't think we have much to add. We appreciate the opportunity, and the staff was great in working with to try and help us kind of get through somewhat of a cumbersome site plan approach. Again, obviously because it's very small site to work with, the drive-through only component kind of helps, you know, to work out some of those things. There are four parking spaces. One of them is an ADA-compliant space. Again, we tried to be cognizant of traffic flow. We did definitely adjust the site plan to make sure that the apron onto Gillis Avenue was not close to the highway. Excuse me one second. Sorry about that. So yeah, I think, you know, pretty much it's pretty self-explanatory, and we do have a great opportunity to get what amounts to the new Duncan Standard Building in a great location. So unless anybody else has any questions, which we'd be happy to answer, I think we're good.
Very good. Thank you, Mario. Do we have any questions for our applicant? Yes, please. Mr. Duval.
Mr. Chair, the questions that I have relate to the drawing that's being displayed right now is your site layout, plan view. Do I correctly see an entrance onto the property from Washington Street, which you've got labeled as Voyager Highway, and then an additional entry and exit from Gillis Avenue?
Yes, that's correct. The apron onto the highway is existing. So we're probably going to refurbish it, but it's currently there now. And there is an apron that is similar to the apron that we have on Gillis Avenue, which is, again, further south.
So those are the...
In a very tight spot, so we've eliminated those and are creating the new one north, as far north as basically we possibly can.
So those are the stippled areas on your drawing. Your drawing shows it looks like about eight cars in the queue between, you know, approaching the order window and then...
Correct.
And then the service pickup windows here. What I'm looking at is that how... I don't know how to anticipate what the amount of traffic coming onto the site would be from Washington, but it looks to me like bringing that traffic in from Washington through that existing curb and then also having that parallel to the exiting of the drive-through. It looks like the thing might get locked up. Do you have a sense of what you would expect as a typical number of vehicles that would be on that site at any point in time to say whether this is going to lock the thing up and have traffic backed up on Washington?
Well, that's kind of why that we feel the site plan works pretty well is because that path on the east side of the property line off of the highway can literally hold a couple cars there because a majority of the traffic pattern is literally around the building and then back onto Gillis. So as cars do come on off the highway, there's an ability for them to have kind of a holding pattern area before they enter the drive-through. The eight-car stack is definitely typical for a location like this. Again, it's drive-through only, but, you know, we definitely feel comfortable that, based on the projected volume, we won't have any issues with traffic backing up onto the highway because of the ability to have the stacks start as far north as possible.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for our applicant?
I just have one question for the applicant, and mine was actually related to traffic flow as well. So if you're heading eastbound on Washington, you're going to turn left on Gillis Avenue, head north, and then my assumption is that there's not enough room to turn right into the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot and actually get to the ordering board. You would need to go up through the public alley, cycle around the backside of the trash can, and then come back pointing the right direction. Am I understanding that correctly? I'm not necessarily saying that's a fault. I'm just wanting to make sure that I understand that you can't turn directly in from Gillis, hang a right, and get to the ordering screen, or can you?
You can.
Okay, very good.
You can.
It looked a little tight to me, so that was going to be my question, is if it was possible to make that turn. So that was my only question.
Yeah. There's no doubt it's tight, but please note, the drive aisle is about 12 feet wide, where, you know, a typical parking stall is like nine feet wide. So we feel comfortable that when people make this turn, there's an ability to kind of take the wider turn and still have room to make it back into the lane.
Very good, understood. Thank you for the explanation. Do we have any other questions for our applicant? Okay, very good. Do we have any other testimony or anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of the variance request that we have in front of us? Second call. Anyone else online or anywhere that would like to speak on this? All right, very good. Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing here at 6:18, and I'm going to bring that back to us for discussion within the Commission here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Gorham.
First thing I want to say is that this is going to be an improvement. If you're old-brainer like me, I think that was the gas station that blew up at one point. It was. Somebody put gas into the wrong tank, and it's kind of been there and never really fixed. It's kind of been just sitting there ever since, so I think this is a move forward. I do have questions about the mechanics of the new lighting code. I'd love to see that new lighting code get in effect as soon as possible, but I don't think we can really... Maybe I'm thinking out loud here, but can we really stipulate that the new code would be in effect? Or is that something legally we really can't do?
Mr. Kramvik?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, unless it was related to like where the building's going to be placed, say the building was going to be closer as a result to a residential property, you know, you could maybe attach conditions to the lighting not to affect that residential property, but it really has to be related to the two variance requests.
Okay.
More than a... Different than a conditional use permit.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else for comment, discussion, anything? All right, I'm going to jump in here, and I'm just going to say, first of all, to the applicant, thank you so much for at least considering... Hopefully this goes well, but just for wanting to build in the city of Brainerd. That's awesome, fantastic. Thank you so much for bringing this forward and this project forward. I also am of the opinion that, for as long as I can remember... I haven't lived here my entire life, but as long as I can remember, that corner has just been sitting there in what appears to be basically stuck in time for what I think is decades. So I am super excited about a new project coming in here. This is not just a remodel, but this is an actually raising of an existing structure and in a new building coming in here. And I think this is... We should just jump at this at the first opportunity. I also drove kind of around the area and looked at this, and, you know, I know there's some considerations here with the drive-through and that, but the reality is that we have very, very similar dynamics playing out virtually just about a block to block and a half to the east. So where I stand on this is I'm in full support, and I would love to approve this and get the applicant rolling, so that's where I'm at. Any other comments, concerns, anything within the Commission? All right, hearing none. If there's no other questions for staff, I'm going to be looking for a motion on this at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I would just like to make a motion that we approve the variance. James, we're all... I'm assuming we're comfortable with the conditions that are in there, and so I would like to make a motion that we approve the variance with the conditions that were discussed, that you discussed, that you laid out that are in the packet.
Very good. We have a motion to approve with the conditions attached. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Very good. Do we have any further discussion here? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. There we go. James, if we still have the folks online, could you just give them the real quick rundown of what's going to be happening here post-haste?
Yeah, so this will be next heard at the June 5th City Council meeting at 7:30. We'll give you the code as well to tune into that via WebEx or phone call, but a final vote will be held at City Council.
Very good. Thank you so much again to the applicants, and we certainly wish you the best. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your consideration.
Thanks for the help.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
All right, very good. We're going to move on to item 7B. This is the consideration of a variance request for 431 B Street Northeast. Mr. Kramvik, would you please give us the rundown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dale Holmquist Jr. has submitted a variance request at 431 B Street Northeast to construct an addition onto an existing accessory structure. The request of variance is from zoning code Section 515-2-8C. The applicant is requesting the accessory structure building side yard corner setback be seven feet for the corner lot property in the TN1 District. The TN1 District allows for a 10-foot side yard corner setback for detached accessory structures. The applicant has proposed a 12-foot by 24-foot addition for a total accessory structure square footage of approximately 713 square feet. Also, in addition to a second story, so that also plays into that seven-foot side yard corner setback. Technically, that's an expansion of illegal nonconformity, so it's an addition plus the allowing a second story on there with that seven-foot setback. Variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance. The purpose of the TN1 zoning district is to provide for compact pedestrian-oriented mix of residential uses. It's a neighborhood that is designed in a compact manner to ensure density and pedestrian orientation. This variance request is consistent with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance. When the variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan, in Housing Goal 3 Policy 2 states that the city should promote the maintenance and rehabilitation of all properties. Certainly, the remodel in addition to the garage would add value to this property. Variances may be granted when the applicant for the variance established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance. The lot at 431 B Street has a non-conforming lot width of 42 feet as opposed to the minimum 50-foot lot, which is seen in a lot of the TN1 District. Also, that this accessory structure was built a number of years ago, as well as the house. This is in a historic neighborhood. So some of the zoning code requirements during that time are different than what we have now. The variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locale. The granting of this variance will not substantially affect the neighborhood character as many nearby primary structures and accessory structures do not meet those current allowable setback standards that I just talked about. Also, the height of the garage is consistent with the neighborhood as there's many surrounding two-story structures. Maybe not as many garages per se, but within the neighborhoods, there's a number of two-story homes, much different than, say, maybe the Grayden Avenue area. So it would be consistent with the overall height. So with that, staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve this variance request at 431 B Street for a seven-foot side yard corner accessory structure setback. And before maybe taking questions, kind of elaborate as well. If you drove by the property, you'll see that Mr. Holmquist does work on jet skis on the property, and this potential variance would be, I guess, part of that, kind of getting the jet skis within the accessory structure. There would be... There is a requirement, and I've already talked with the applicant, to apply for a home business license. So there are a number of standards that are required with that as well. Essentially not having some of the jet skis out on the lawn, properly parked, dealing with outdoor storage. So that is something that staff will certainly be working with the applicant on as well to make sure everything's compliant with those standards of the home business.
Very good. Thank you, James. Do we have any questions for staff? Please, Mr. Duval.
Chair, thank you. James, does the addition increase the nonconformity?
The addition would increase the nonconformity based on... The addition plus the addition up would increase the nonconformity.
So to the setback, or is there a different aspect that you're talking about that...
Nope. So that's really what the increase of the nonconformity would be. So right now, the garage is at a seven-foot setback in the district. The side yard corner would be at 10. So you can't do it without a variance essentially. So if the applicant was just proposing to go up, that would require the variance, or if he was just proposing to go out, would also require that same variance.
But in no instance does the height or the addition reduce the setback from seven feet to something less. He's not building into...
Not building any further.
Right, so that's, I guess, where I'm getting at.
Okay, yep. So still maintaining what the existing garage is at.
So we're not making it more nonconforming by pushing it further towards the street.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for staff? Just to be clear, though, there is greater nonconformity on the side... What would be the side yard setback? Because we're building to the rear, correct? To the addition, or...
The addition on this picture is going south.
Okay.
And right in line with the existing garage.
Yep, understood. So the nonconformity is along the Fifth Street.
Exactly.
Correct, and we're just extending that.
Just extending that.
Okay. Very good. I just want to make sure I understand real clearly what our limitations are as a commission for conditions that we... I understand we can't place conditions on the variance, on the variance portion of this, but the home business licensure, what types of conditions could we... Would this commission be able to place on that? And what types of conditions would we not be? I don't want to put you too much on the spot here, but...
Yeah, so...
Give us a general lay of the land here.
So the variance, any conditions placed on the variance would have to be related to what the applicant's doing, extending that way, going up, some type of potential could be related to lights on the structure, whether or not that would affect the neighboring properties. So any conditions would have to be directly related to the variance, attached to the variance. But as I mentioned, the applicant will be required to get a home business license. That is an over-the-counter, essentially an administrative permit. But with that, conditions can be added, and since this is in front of the Planning Commission, Planning Commission can certainly make any recommendations as part of adding any conditions to the home business itself.
Understood. Okay.
That would be more related to the work with the jet skis.
Yeah, understood. Okay, very good. Any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'm just going to go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of this, 6:29. I'm going to invite the applicant, if you so choose, to come on up and just give us a brief rundown of what you're talking about doing here. And if not, you don't have to, but we may have questions for you. So at this time, if you would like to, you can certainly come up. If you do, state your name, your address, and all that jazz, and let us know who you are, and let us hear what you would like for us to hear. If not, just be willing to answer any questions if we have any for yourself. Okay?
Daley Holmquist Jr. I go by DJ and live at 431 B Street. And what I'm looking to do is, as you can see from north to south on this former... This lab is just south of there. Add on to there and then going up. So then the privacy fence going along by lot line, which is a house, and I do that if we keep going in that direction. So nobody sees it either. So it's just parking up there.
Understood. Understood.
That's my main goal. I am doing everything to make it look really, really nice because the whole place, etc., you know, the house will be nice to you probably next year, or ways to have, etc., to match that. So I'm doing it at the value and also to work on it.
Understood.
I have a whole lot of job.
Right, very good. Do we have any questions for the applicant that we have in front of us here?
Just one, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
And this is your house?
Yes.
Cool.
Want to hear a nice story about it?
Sure. Why not?
My dad worked for the State Patrol back in the 60s. He actually rented that house. Rented about downstairs of that house back in the 60s. My mom and dad are alive right now. They're just like, I was stoked. I mean, you bought it.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Holmquist? All right, very good. We'll take you off the spot. You don't have to stay up anymore. Do we have anyone else online or anyone else that would like to speak regarding to the matter here? If so, and there's no one else on there. Very good. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and then close the, yes, please.
Before we close the public hearing, questions for staff again. So what kind of a business use is this? Would it be a small engine and boat repair, or?
It is minor repairs, from my understanding from the applicant, not any major engine repair, you know, nothing that would produce harmful noise or fumes. That's going to be part of the home business application stating that part of it as well. So manufacturing of different products or, you know, some small repair is allowed under the home business. So, you know, there is a bit of a gray area there, but staff does believe that it does fit under that home business because there's not any major repairs happening at the property.
Anything else, Mr. DeVal?
Yeah, well, you know, if staff is comfortable with that and council would back that up, you know, city attorney would back that up, I think I'm fine with it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeVal. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing at 6:33 and I'm going to open it up to our esteemed commission here for any discussion. I have just one item here I'll just jump in with. I feel like the, I drove by this property, you probably saw me today, that was me taking the picture, I was waving at you there. So I feel like we're going the right direction with this because my concern with the property is that it looks like a marina in, you know, right in kind of a residential area, right? So my concern was the, you know, the jet skis that were for sale for instance, sitting on a trailer in the front yard, sitting for sale. So there seems to be, at least when I saw it today, a little bit of a crossover, but that is blending a little bit more out of the range of repair and those kinds of things and more, you know, into retail sales inside a residential district. That's my concern. So I think I'm okay with the variance application, building-wise and structural-wise. I think what I would like to see is some type of effort, just guidance given perhaps by this. We're not the body that does this, but we can certainly give guidance to Mr. Kramvik that when it comes time for this home business licensure, that there be some pretty strict definitions on what the use should be in this yard outside of this building. So I think that's the, you know, the only thoughts that I have here with this. James, as far as you know, any complaints that we've received from neighboring properties regarding this?
Staff has not received any complaints. Part of the home business license, you know, I think it would fall under this, the home business may not include over-the-counter sales of merchandise that's been produced off the site. You know, and so I was thinking, you know, certainly about this and things are repaired on the site. Would this fall under, you know, say somebody buys a piece of furniture and wants to refurbish it, you know, that would probably fall under kind of the same category and I could see, you know, that would still be not completely built on site. So, you know, a lot of this obviously has been produced off-site. So I think that would be one of the conditions of the home business is that you can't, you know, have people come there to look at it. It would, you know, probably have to be more something posted online and sales that-wise, it's not essentially set up to be a lot for people to come and take a look at.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Any other, please.
Chair, I think, you know, the use piece is not before us, but it seems to be troublesome and not, troublesome is not the right word. It's uncertain as to how it fits, right? It can go either way. I too don't have a problem with the variance request here, but I think there may need to be staff follow-up, just to be clear that the use that's currently there is appropriate for a TN1. You know, if we've got sales and we have repairs, those are clearly not identified as appropriate or permitted uses in our table of uses. So I think it'd be good to have a conversation with the applicant, maybe touch and base with the city attorney and make sure we're appropriately interpreting that. But that doesn't have bearing on the variance request before us, which is about whether in addition, you know, the use can be different and still, the structure can be used in a different way as proposed. So I just want to ask that staff consider kind of...
Staff can consult with the city attorney before the city council meeting to provide clarity.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments, any other discussion items? All right, hearing none. We're on to the motion portion of this, if there is one.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the commission approve the variance request at 431B Street for a seven-foot side yard corner accessory structure setback.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. James, will you please let our applicant know what the next steps are here?
Yep, so this will be heard at the next City Council meeting on June 5th at 7:30. And certainly welcome to attend that, and that will be the final ruling, whether it's approved or denied.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
All right, very good. We're going to move on to item 7C. This is the consideration of a variance request for 2424 Business 371. Please, Mr. Kramvik.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Dylan's actually going to do this one here, so I will turn over.
Mr. Edwards.
All right. So we are here considering a variance request for 2424 Business 371. This is a public, semi-public zoning district property, and the item in particular for the variance is an exception to the 12-foot monument sign height limit. Section 515-3-35J4B regulates signage for public semi-public district uses stating that each principal building on a lot, there shall be no more than one freestanding monument sign, except on a corner lot where two signs, one facing each street, shall be permitted. No such sign shall exceed 100 square feet in area. Monument signs may not exceed 12 feet in height. The monument sign may include a changeable copy sign as part of the allowable sign area. The applicant is requesting a variance from the 12-foot monument sign height limit to install a 15-foot monument sign with an area of 86 square feet. General provisions and evaluation criteria, variance should only be permitted when in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance. Purpose of this ordinance is to improve visual appearance of the city while providing for effective means of communication consistent with constitutional guarantees and city's goals for public safety. This request allows the applicant and property to communicate their message more clearly and is more aesthetically pleasing, also fits with the character of the locale. This is consistent with comprehensive plan. Variance proposed supports the aims of Land Use Goal II, thoughtful planning to maintain the unique identity of the city and all appropriate land uses that support it. Policy III, promoting reinvestment in the city's main highway corridors and downtown. The proposed sign is an investment in visual improvement of a property on one of the main thoroughfares into the city. Variances may be granted when the applicant for the variance establishes that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance. This is where we get into the unique challenge presented by Business 371 in this case compared to other properties in Brainerd. The average right-of-way area for most properties in the city of Brainerd is approximately 15 feet. If you've driven past this property, the setback along Business 371 is 73 feet from the curb to the start of the property, which, when factoring in the existing three-foot setback for monument signs, puts this sign 76 to 77 feet off of the roadway. Significantly greater than most signs are off of the roadway throughout the rest of the city of Brainerd. When you also factor in the speed limit of this particular section of town, it makes it more difficult for drivers to actually see messages on those signs. Adding additional height to the sign will help communicate messages and entrances to the property, which with the sign for those entrances being so far off of the road, becomes a challenge. Section 515-5-4B4 states variance is granted when the applicant for the variance establishes that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance. The plight of the landowner in this situation is due to the width of the right-of-way and the speed of traffic on Business 371, which is unique to this property. The variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locale. This will enhance the property. It's modest in size compared to billboards in the same region. I can think of Mills Fleet Farm billboards are not directly adjacent south to this, but are south of this on Business 371. At the time of this writing, no one has contacted the Community Development Department with questions regarding the project, and the staff opinion is recommended approval of a recommendation for this variance to allow the 15-foot tall monument sign to City Council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Do we have any questions for staff? Please, Tiffany.
And I will reserve it for the applicant if that's the answer you give me, but how tall is the current sign that's out there?
I do not know the exact height of the current sign.
Does the applicant know that? About 10 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Quick one.
Yes, please, Mr. Coram.
Mr. Edwards, is the sign in the same location? Is it going to replace the same location or a different location than the current sign?
Based on the site plan, I believe it is in approximately the same location.
Same setback, I think it's just going to be a little bit to be the south.
Okay, so it's still going to be 73 feet back from within the 73, I'm still trying to get my mind wrapped around the 73 foot.
The current one is up to essentially what they're allowed to for the setback, so it's three feet back from the, yeah.
It's a relatively gentle curve there, so negligible amount of feet.
Okay, that's all.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay, very good. I'm going to open up the public hearing here at 6:44. We'll ask, or have the opportunity for the applicant to come forward, if you so choose. Don't have to. It's pretty cut and dried what we got cooking here, so, but we may have some questions for you, and if we do, we'll have to wrangle you up here, all right? Okay, very good. Do we have any questions for our applicant? Yeah, please. Sorry, you've got to come on up here, so no problem.
Got to drag you up here.
Yeah, got to drag you up here. Just go ahead and state your name, Scott, and all that.
Scott Dawson, I'm the development director at Teen Challenge.
Yes, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you know, can I have the drawing of the property displayed, please, the sign itself? Yes, thank you. It was, I presume the person is on there for visual scale. You get a feel for what 15-foot looks like. If the message center, which is the lower panel, were lowered so that the bottom part of that was at that individual's elbow, would that affect the readability of the messages that you're displaying on that board?
Our concern was with the design of the sign with the 12-foot height and the four-foot, was it two-inch display board? If that was lowered, we were, our maintenance people were concerned about the snow getting close to the bottom of the existing, which would be the electronic sign, it was lowered to that level, with the blowing and whatnot of that crap yard, we would be concerned about the bottom of the sign being close to the...
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Can you tell me what the function of the space of the signpost above your logo, Adult and Teen Challenge Central Minnesota?
I'm sure it's just a design, just cosmetic.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant here? Is this a pre-manufactured sign, comes out of a box somewhere? Not a box, but I'm assuming that's where the dynamics of these proportions and size and everything came from. Somebody's not building this from scratch at a shop.
It's not advertising.
Yep, yep. Josh, okay. Very good. Any other questions for our applicant? Look at that, you're done. All right, thank you so much. All right, do we have any other, anybody online, any other testimony on who would like to speak? All right, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and close this, open for this public hearing here, sorry, at 6:47. We'll bring it back to us for discussion. All right, I'll just jump in here. There are, I can certainly, I certainly feel like there are places where in the city I would not be jumping up and down to be putting a sign up that is over our 12-foot height, but this is not one of them, in my opinion, just proportionally looking at the space. I just don't see any downside to this one here, so also, when I saw the screen, what went to my mind wasn't snow, it was sprinklers, but is this probably not irrigated? But anyways, so where I'm at on what this is, I don't really see any issue with this one on this particular parcel.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
You know, I, you know, your point is valid. What I'm having difficulty getting past is I don't see the practical difficulty. In other words, this is a design issue. You know, you could take a foot and a half, it looks like just estimating off the top of the sign, and that leaves me a foot and a half, and I could drop that overall to those two screens down, another foot and a half to that man's elbow, and we have a compliant sign that still has the square footage necessary to be able to project readable information out 73 feet to a speeding vehicle going down the highway, you know? So I think it doesn't compromise the functionality of the sign, and because it's a design issue, that's not a practical difficulty, and so I struggle to say, how can we approve a variance if we can't identify a practical difficulty? And that's where I'm at on this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeVal. Yes, please.
I think the only, the practical difficulty may actually just be a marketplace thing. It may be that the company, is this a custom-made sign, I'm wondering? Or is this a pick-and-out catalog, I like that sign? If it's a pick-and-out of a catalog, I like that sign, if they're pre-manufactured, then maybe it's a practical difficulty, because you'd have to have somebody custom-make a sign and cut the top off. I personally, I can see where Commissioner DeVal is coming from, that everything could be done and it could all be done compliant. So that's where I see the practical difficulty is, if it would cost three times as much to have a custom-made sign. I don't know. That's my only thinking.
Yeah, Mr. DeVal.
Well, and I, you know, unfortunately, the higher cost under that section of code, it's the economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulty.
There you go.
You know, you can't, it seems like you keep running into the wall of, is this truly a practical difficulty or is it a design choice? And, you know, I mean, what is proposed is an aesthetically appealing sign. I don't have issues with the design of this. What I'm having trouble with is, we got to shave three feet off of it. And I think it can be done, but it may have more cost, or maybe it requires a different sign company to come up with something that works, that they can build in a 12-foot height.
Understood. Understood. Mr. Edwards, you spent a considerable amount of the time during the discussion of this at that 73-foot setback, so that's the only thing that's kind of digging in my mind as a potential practical difficulty. If this business has an...you know, some version of an anomaly that where their sign has to be vastly much farther back than other businesses that are just a little further down the road. Mr. Kramvik?
Yeah, I want to maybe add on to that a little bit as well. I'd say along here, this property is pretty unique because it's PSP district. There's no other PSP districts along this route, so typically, you know, anything that's in what would have been our old B4s, what a lot of this was, would have had 25-foot sign allowance. So the PSP districts typically found, you know, maybe in our neighborhoods with some larger churches like St. Andrews, some of our schools that are in neighborhoods, which certainly a 12-foot sign makes sense. So looking at this with the distance that it's away, I know I've driven by Teen Challenge before, the existing sign can be difficult to see at times because of the...because of the distance of the right-of-way, as well as the speed of traffic there. So I do see a practical difficulty because of that distance and speed there with the existing sign, and I don't have the exact calculations of what size you need for something like that, but staff does see that as a potential practical difficulty.
Understood. But potentially, the readability isn't changed. Even if it were allowed higher, the readability is the same...the sign is the same size, right? And the sign isn't moving up higher, right?
Right. And, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I mean, you know, the...I think that line of argument is really addressing item four here, which is the plight of the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property, you know? And I would agree with all those. And I think the applicant is trying to address that difficulty by making those screens as large as reasonably possible to be able to make the print readable and large, but it still sends me back to 3C, which gets at the practical difficulty aspect to this, and it's a design issue. It's not...it's not some other variable that can't be managed away with something different or a different approach.
Understood, understood. Do we have any more discussion? All right, that's going to bring us to...potentially to a motion here. So if someone would like to take a stab at this, one way or another, I'm going to be asking for a roll call vote on this, I think. Just be prepared, but if we could get a motion perhaps one way or another, now would be the time.
I'll move to approve the variance request.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve? Or, excuse me, we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to second? Do we have a second on the motion?
That's what you want.
That's what I want. I'm asking, yeah, there we go. Do we have a second?
I will second the motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we're going to take this vote by roll call, please. Mr. Kramvik?
Marone. Corum?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Duval?
No.
Jaeger?
No. So we're split 50-50, but we are an advisory committee, so my recommendation for us is just go ahead and pass this along to the planning commission and...or, excuse me, the city council, and let them know that we basically were 50-50 vote on this, and let the city council take a run at this, so. Very good. All right. Thank you. Just let our applicant know what our next steps are, please.
Yep, so this will be heard at the next city council meeting, June 5th, at 7:30, and that'll be a final vote to either approve or deny.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you. All right, very good. We're going to move on to...let's see, where are we at? 7D, this is a discussion on adult-use cannabis bill. Ow, this is getting exciting. All right, very good. Mr. Kramvik?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is just a discussion topic here. Staff does want to kind of update you where the state of Minnesota is at with this. So the Senate and the House bills are considerably different. I do understand, I think within the last day, committees have met, and I think they believe they have agreed in some sort to some type of final bill. The difference is, I guess, the Senate bill did contain stronger language for local zoning authorities, as well as potential local limits on retailers, and revenue sharing to provide local government funding. I believe, within the compromise, that it does sound like there could be a limit to the number of dispensaries and keeping them away from schools, so it may be something that...I'm not sure if zoning will be involved or not. That's something I think is going to be coming out in the next couple of days after staff has a day or two to prepare the language that was agreed upon. It does sound like Governor Walz does plan to sign the cannabis bill. So right now, it is at a bit of an unknown, but would also like to kind of mention where we're at with our existing zoning code with kind of similar things such as tobacco, alcohol. Within our existing zoning code, the sale of liquor is separated within the table of uses, so it's allowed in the TN2 district, TN3, GC, general commercial, the commercial corridor district, town center, Main Street, Makers' Employment, and the GI districts. It's not called out specifically within the allowed uses, so there's not a separate section saying what you can and cannot do with it. It's mainly regulated through state licensing, such as hours of operation, that type of thing. Tobacco sales doesn't have a separate use item on the table and just be considered in the category of commercial slash retail establishments, and those are permitted in essentially the same zoning districts. It didn't include the GI district within that. But that's where our existing zoning code fits, I guess, with other controlled substances. So this is just kind of a discussion to see if planning commission has any comments with this. You know, there could be...if there were a recommendation for this, it'd just be recommending that if there, you know, potential is language that would allow local zoning authorities to take a look at it, maybe there's a recommendation to city council that planning commission would like to take a look at it, if and when that's a possibility. Certainly can answer any other questions, and then certainly there can be comments from the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. All right, any questions for staff?
Questions, but I'll comment. Mr. Kramvik, I've also been watching the bill work its way through conference committee. I didn't hear anything about the school thing. The compromise I saw between the House and the Senate, that my understanding, is that a town may cap for every 12,500 people, you can say only one store per every 12,500 people. So I didn't...I think it's a restrictive language that was sought out in the House, I think is kind of losing out to the Senate, if I'm understanding that correct on.
So, yeah, so that is, I believe, going to be part of it. I think it's every 12,500. You can limit the number. I did find an article that expanded a little bit more on what some of the potential agreed-upon language was, and they did mention schools in there. So I don't know if that'll be, you know, reach the final bill or not, but it was mentioned. And I'm...right now, alcohol has that same thing at the state level. There's a certain number of feet that it has to be away from the school, so it could be similar for something like this.
I would have to say it's kind of preposterous, this idea that what would stop a 15-year-old from buying a bottle of beer is the proximity to the school. Hopefully, something else is going to stop the...
And I don't think that's something that's at the local zoning authority. Probably be a state thing, so.
I don't get that one. All right.
All right, any other questions for staff? Yeah, please, Mr. Chair. So, James, your staff opinion is that we have sort of an existing parking spot in our ordinance for this kind of use, or would something have to be created in order to be able to fit it into the ordinance?
I don't believe something would have to be created, but if there is essentially allowance within the bill for a local zoning authority to take a look at it, it could potentially be separated like alcohol is. Alcohol, well, you know, it is a retail establishment, it could have fell under there, but, you know, tobacco falls under just that retail category. There could be a separation. Obviously, you know, there's the TN2 district, which is kind of a mix of residential and business uses. That could certainly be looked at with it, just like it could have not fallen under the liquor sales for the TN2 district. But I'm not sure if that will make the final bill or not. Part of that, as well as, I believe, August 1st, they're going to be allowing potentially possession, as well as home growing, but I think that's going to be a year away from the actual sale in a legal dispensary. So I do believe if something passes, there will be considerable amount of time to potentially take a look at it.
All right, comments, discussion?
I'll just add, I think it should be...cannabis shouldn't be treated any different than alcohol, and whatever, it should fit right in the zoning code the exact same way. That'd be my thinking on it.
I have a question, maybe somebody can enlighten me. What is the idea behind the metric of 12,500 people per store? What is the idea behind this? Anyone have a reason why we have a...
Is there something similar with liquor licenses?
My only guess, Mr. Jaeger, is that what they're thinking is that we have to keep the people in small towns, we have to give them something. I think that's how I read it. We have to give them something. Let's give them that. That's my best guess.
Or an incentive for growth, if you have 12,499 people in your...
Right.
And you want a second?
And you want a second.
Yeah.
And I just don't understand why I said it.
I just don't get it. I don't...I don't...
Yeah, I'm not sure where that number came from.
If anyone have an idea?
Yeah. I believe...I believe things were adjusted within our city code regarding essentially on sale, which would be like a bar. I believe there may still be a limit to the number that the city has that's just a bar without food service. So I don't know if the state has some type of, you know, allowance for local authorities to do something similar to that, but, you know, I believe there's a certain number that's allowed within the city of Brainerd for just bars.
Well, I can say, if I was in this business, I'd be looking for towns that have about 12,300 people in them, and I would have a lock on the market. The only other thing I can say is, is this has been...there are other states that have had this going on for quite some time. I got to believe that if this does get to a point of where we want something in our ordinance for this, we're going to have many, many samples to at least draw from as examples from the very conservative side to the very liberal side of this object that we can look at, that we could certainly run through us and get a pretty good grasp of what other cities are doing, what problems they're having, and so forth. So I'm forward to the discussion, why not?
Final comment, my perspective on this would be that, you know, that if we have a parking spot for the use, I think that's going to be, or at least in our minds, how we can handle this, I think that's a good place for us to be. If we...my guess would be, if this is approved and signed by the governor and implemented, I think we're going to see dispensaries pretty quickly, and so it would be good to have a census to where those will be as we think about managing growth in our city. So I think it's helpful to hear that, you know, we've got models here, we can think about it. We'll have to build a permitting process, I presume, you know, in some ways. Other ways, it's...it would be a legal use, or a legal use dictated by the state. So, I mean, it gets down to what that final bill looks like to say, is there a role in the city for being able to regulate any aspects of this that would help fit into our comprehensive plan, fit into our zoning structure and such? My guess is it'll happen pretty quick. We should be...I would predict that we'll see dispensaries fairly quickly following any passage or something like this.
And from that viewpoint, your comment is leading us to the direction of kind of being ahead of the curve, so to speak. Be ready for this. If it passes, it's going to hit us pretty fast. All right. We go to the discussion?
I do think that input from the planning commission would be good to bring to council and not just dump this on the council. I say, as a member of the council. Don't just dump it on us, please. Let's start with it here.
So if that seems like a general consensus from the planning commission, I think the first step, if something does get signed, we'd look at it from staff perspective within city hall, because there's...it affects the business licensing, it affects potentially planning zoning, if local government is able to put zoning, you know, ordinances around it. Also, police department and how they'd manage stuff like that, so I think it would maybe go to city council first, but within that discussion, you know, I could bring up that the planning commission would like to look at it if there are potential zoning, things that can be done to it.
Good. Thank you, James. All right, we're going to move on to item eight. This is a public forum. This is time for people, anyone who would like to come forward to let us hear what they would like for us to hear. I'm going to open that public forum at 7:06. Do we have anyone online? Anyone in the room? We have no one in the room. I'm going to close the public forum at 7:06, and I'm going to move on to staff reports, please. Mr. Kramvik?
Yeah, so I'll just update planning commission on VCV cryptocurrency. They have pretty much finalized a design now that includes one large building on one of the properties, kind of, I guess, two large buildings connected by another piece, as well as an office connected to it. So that will be at the next EDA meeting on June 8th. So the EDA, because they conveyed the land to VCV, and because there was a major alteration to the design, it will be relooked at and must be approved by the EDA. So just wanted to update planning commission on that, and that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Mr. Edwards, anything?
I'm the only thing, going back to our discussion topic on adult-use cannabis, was it a cap at one per 12,500, or was it a allowance that that could be the limit? I wasn't sure in my own reading and looking through that myself, whether it was...you were capped at that, and it was basically a monopoly for small towns, or whether it was, you know, you have 12,500, you could put out as many licenses as you wanted. I wasn't sure which way that read.
From my reading, I believe that a city would maybe be able to cap it if they'd like, but they could also let as many as they wanted to be allowed as well.
Sorry, I just thought that might be something we wanted to...
That was my reading as well of the legislation.
Wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Ballmer, anything? Anyone else? All right, very good. Commission member reports. Anyone?
Pass.
Pass? Pass? We're good? Pass? All right, one thing. The park down here, our park down here, our park down here. The park down here, I just want to say, it's not even really open yet, and that...there's been people in there every single day when I drive by. They're out on the bridge, looking over it, sitting in the bleachers, sitting on the pavilion, so that's exciting. So good work to all who have worked on that. Thank you for staff, for all of the work at this week's meeting, and with that, I will end my report, and I'm looking for item number 11, which is, as we all know, an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
And a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
We'll have a staring contest with you.
We have a tie for second. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, everyone. Well done.
You're a tough stayer over there.